Telephone tells me it's 7:00 P.M. And that's I'd like to call the June 22nd City Council meeting to order. Because of COVID-19 restrictions, our meeting tonight will be held virtually via Zoom. Public comments for this evening were accepted in advance by mail and email. There are two of them, I'm told. These comments will be read into the public record shortly. If you would like to submit a public comment for our next meeting, please visit www.marium.org and follow the directions listed there. As a reminder to the City Council, please be conscientious of others trying to speak and speak slowly and clearly. State your name prior to speaking. I will need to confirm something that may have been difficult to hear. I will ask for clarification. The format for council consideration on items tonight will be staff presentations. Then I will open time for council questions. Please hold questions till the end of staff presentation. If you have a question when I ask for them, please raise your hand so they can see it on video. I might add too that right now, for example, I have one, two, three, four, five council members, six that I can see. That means there's two of them I can't see without turning the page and seeing the other two of you. And for some reason, it changes. So if you're sitting there waving your hand like crazy, I may not be able to see you. And that's why I'm going to have Meredith help me out. So just be patient, please.
If I could interject one other thing.
Sure.
We commented on this right before we started the meeting. But if everyone can remember, please mute and unmute yourself, especially when we're doing votes. And that would be helpful. And so just a reminder to do that. I can mute you if there is some interference in the background, but it's hard for me to quickly do that during a roll call. So if you could just remember to please do that, that would be very helpful for us.
Very good. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Sizemore?
Here.
Councilmember Debold?
Here.
Councilmember Hands?
Here.
Councilmember Caldwell?
Here.
Councilmember Knapp?
Here.
Councilmember Neal?
Here.
Councilmember Pape?
Here.
Councilmember Silvers?
Here.
Councilmember Yadrich?
Here.
Very good.
Well done. I said, "Well done."
Okay. I will move next into public comments. And Julie, would you please read any public comments that were submitted in advance into the record this time?
Okay. Alrighty, our first public comment is from Kirk Jones, 9120 West 48th Street. Residents would benefit greatly from constructing a dog park, and a great place is where the old community center is now. I know the steering committee suggested an amphitheater, but would the benefit outweigh the cost? For a dog park, it most certainly would. And then the next comment is from Michelle French, 0113 West 50th Terrace. Hello, I am a six-plus-year resident of Miriam and would very much like to see the addition of a dog park along Miriam Drive and the Streamway Trail. There are lots of green space areas that with little funding and maintenance could provide a great benefit to residents. Talks of an amphitheater, which seems like a waste and gross misuse of resources for the city and its residents. Whereas a dog park could provide a benefit, not only by residents of Miriam, but also to residents of neighboring communities. Lots of money and potential spending in downtown businesses. That was the two public comments.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move into our consent agenda. We only have one item this evening, so I'll entertain a motion and a second for approval of the minutes of City Council meeting held on June 8th. Anyone want to make a motion on the second? Bob, Pape?
Yeah, I make a motion, Mayor, that we approve our consent item number one.
And do I have a second, Scott?
I'll second. Got D-bone.
Do a motion and a second, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Debold?
Aye.
Councilmember Hands?
Aye.
Councilmember?
Aye.
Councilmember Knapp?
Aye.
Councilmember Neal?
Aye.
Councilmember Pape?
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers?
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich?
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Very good. Don't have anything this evening under Mayor's report? So we'll move into Finance Administration. And just as a reminder, we're going to go through the rest of the meeting where the staff will make presentations regarding the item. And then we'll ask you to hold your questions till the end of the presentation, just in case they cover what your question may have been during their presentation. And then I'll, we'll go to the council members one at a time. And please let us answer the question before we start with another question, rather than asking multiple questions at a time, if you plan on doing that. So don't forget to state your name before you ask a question. So folks that maybe can't see you can know who it is that's talking. First item on the Finance Administration agenda is a community center update. Meredith, would you please provide staff update on this item?
Yes, good evening, everyone. And I just wanted to reiterate during the council meeting, the email that I sent out to you all last week notifying you that the City Council, the community center opening timeline is delayed. And over the past two weeks, we have just started to experience more COVID-related supply chain delays. And these are things that we had originally thought were headed our way. But as suppliers started to reopen, and they began notifying us that some of the items that are critical to reopening weren't going to be here on the timeline they originally thought they were. And so we know that we only get one opportunity to make a good first impression on this building, and it's something we've been working on for five-plus years. And so it seemed to make sense to delay it a couple of weeks so that when we open it to the public, they can come in and really be wowed by the experience. And so this information is all on our website now. We've communicated it with people who have already purchased their memberships. But the new opening day will be July 20th. This is a Monday. And we'll do soft opening the week of July 20th and then have a full opening on July 25th. And because of the delay, charter members and regular members will be able to come to the building beginning on July 20th. There will just be altered hours to give us a chance to actually operate the building and kind of get our feet under us as we open a brand-new facility. And then, like I said, on July 25th, which is a Saturday, we'll be open 100%. And the indoor pool delay still stands. The tile for the indoor pool has, was not manufactured before the plant shut down. And so we are waiting for that tile to be manufactured. And then once it gets to the site, it's six to eight weeks before it gets installed. So we're still feeling pretty good about that timeline, but we are targeting a Labor Day opening for the indoor pool. So the entire facility should be open completely in early September. And all of the membership discounts and timeline changes that we talked about two meetings ago will still stand. They'll just be pushed back until whenever the indoor pool opens. So I'm happy to answer any questions anyone has about that.
Bob, do you have a question? Bob, Pape?
Yes, Mayor, this is Bob. Yeah, I have a question concerning the people that have memberships that are existing IBF Community Center and what we're doing for those individuals where they haven't been able to utilize that facility. Are we giving any type of rebates back to them or refunds? Or are we at least allowing that money that they've spent to have that membership to actually be utilized toward the new community center?
You know, I am not 100% sure of how that's being handled, but I'm happy to send a follow-up email with details about that. I don't think Anna is on here right now to be able to answer that for us.
Okay. It's my understanding that we're going to roll those over. We were going to extend, it's Chris Engel. We were going to roll those memberships over. Now, I don't know if it was going to be from the second we shut the facility down on March 15th, I believe it was. But we, Anna and I have had, Parks Director Anna and I have had conversations about making sure that people that would have been able to access the existing facility have that rolled over. So they're going to get some sort of credit towards the new facility. Again, as Meredith said, we can get you some, we can get you the specifics, but we have had those conversations that we're not going to leave them out in the cold. We view that as, one, it's just the right thing to do, but also giving them the opportunity to enter into that new facility might also perhaps make them want to transfer their membership from the existing one to the new community center. So that is, that's part of the plan. I just don't know the exact specifics.
Thank you. Any other questions on the community center? Okay, don't see any hands, so, other than Christine.
Sorry.
Okay.
A little slow on the uptake there. So I got an invitation or an announcement, actually, not even an invitation, to go on a tour tomorrow night. I was very surprised.
The Park Board is doing a tour tomorrow night of the facility. They have not been in the building. And so it is a tour in full PPE gear. And they'll have the opportunity to go over the space.
So were we just copied on this as an announcement?
Yeah, it's the, I believe it was the agenda for the Park Board meeting.
Well, it was a separate email. So I mean, it had the agenda attached. It looked to me like I was invited. Okay, so I'm not.
Well, you are invited, yeah. But it, that is the content of the Park Board meeting. So you are not expected to be there. It is for the Park Board.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you for that update. We're going to move to the next item, number two, under Finance Administration, which is Citizen Feedback Tool Discussion. Meredith, you want to take this over again?
Yes, I do. And I'm going to share my screen with you. Give me a second. Can everybody see my PowerPoint?
Yes.
All right. Great. So if you recall, as part of the budget goals adopted by City Council, we have a tactic to investigate the use of surveys and polling tools to seek feedback from constituents on large community issues. And we thought it would be a good time to begin the conversation on exactly how the council would like that tool to be used. So the intent of this presentation tonight is to really set the framework for staff. There are quite a few different types of tools that provide these services, but they all have their nuances. And so it will be helpful for us to understand exactly what the council hopes to gain from using these tools, so we can come back with more information about tools that will help achieve the goals that you are looking for. To help frame that conversation, tonight I'm going to talk about the difference between polls and surveys. And then we're going to talk about some challenges and opportunities that exist from using these types of tools. And once I get through this presentation, I will turn off the PowerPoint and open it back up for a conversation. So as you know, there are really two main categories of feedback that we could seek in this measure. And the first is polling. So the goal of doing a poll is to get instant feedback. This is usually a quick yes-or-no gauge of what the current opinion of the respondent is. There's usually not personal information collected. They're typically anonymous, and they just take a quick few seconds to complete. So for example, do you like cheeseburgers or hamburgers? Something as simple as that. Surveys are a more complex means to get feedback. So surveys are typically used to determine future action. They're usually made up of a series of multiple questions. And respondents typically give some level of personal information to help target or segment the responses. Something like age, zip code, something like that. And because there are usually more than one question, they require a little bit more commitment from the respondent, which means they take more time to not only respond to, but also from the staff side to gather those responses. And they're typically used as one part of a larger exploration of an issue and provide some data points as part of that conversation. So when you think about polling and surveying, one of the things we're interested in knowing from council is, do you want both of these options available to you? Or is there one in particular you're looking for more than another? From a 30,000-foot level, there are some opportunities and challenges that exist when conducting either polls or surveys. And the obvious opportunity is it gives you all a chance to get more feedback from the public. And it lets the public participate in conversations remotely. And they can jump onto a computer, give some instantaneous feedback. And you can get some quick insight on a topic. The other thing that it allows us to do is get insight from voices that aren't often heard. And it lets people who don't have the opportunity to come to a council meeting or just talk to a council member, a chance to get their voice into the conversation. Some challenges that exist with polling and surveying. I think we know from the ETC survey that asking the correct question is a really important part of the validity of the responses that you get, especially at a policy level. And we also know from our tax initiative that educating the public is really important. And that can be particularly challenging when you're talking about a large issue. It can take quite a bit of time and effort to make sure that they have all the information they need to garner a educated response or opinion. And this, another challenge that exists is when you ask for feedback, there could very well be an upper situation where the feedback you get, as a council says, from the public perspective, you should go left. But from a community trustee perspective, it says you should go right. And so if you recall from the council retreat we did, Dr. Now Bandyan talked about this difference between being a community trustee versus a customer service representative. Are you trying to fix someone's immediate issue or concern? Or are you trying to do what's best for the community? Ideally, those things align. But I think there could be an opportunity when taking on some of these bigger issues that they may not. And I think there's a real risk when asking people what they think and then going a different direction from what the results say. Certainly something that can be overcome, but it's a risk we have to acknowledge going into it. Another challenge that exists is making sure we have a diverse representation of respondents. Sometimes you only hear from the loud voices when doing surveying and polling as well, especially if you're not sending it out to a representative sample. That's one of the reasons that we use ETC for our community-wide surveys is because they make sure that it's a random sample that's large enough to be statistically significant. So we know we're getting a diverse representation of those responses. And then I think the big question that we have is, when do we use a tool like this? What types of issues would council be interested in polling the community or surveying the community? And I don't know if we know that off the top of our head, but it would be great to get some insight into maybe some past situations. Do you think you would have liked to use these tools? So we can consider how we would respond in future situations that might look similar. So that's the quick overview. Some things that we need to think about as we dive into this conversation of polling and surveying. I'm going to stop sharing my screen. And then, Mayor, I was hoping we could have just kind of an open conversation about what the council would like from this and what direction staff should move in to get more information.
Okay, well, I don't have anything to say right off the bat. I'm sure someone here does. So anybody want to start off the conversation? Raise your hand. All right, I've got Christine, you can go first.
Oh, good. I'm walking first. I think to answer the question of which tool, it's going to depend on what we're asking about. There have been times that going further in depth would be great, but I totally recognize how long it takes me to have the conversation with constituents, to educate them, bring them up to speed. It seems so obvious to us, because we are inhaling it constantly, that the public is not. So that becomes real problematic. And one of my chief concerns is I feel like part of my responsibility is to guard the amount of time that staff is spending on things like this, or any kind of thing, for that matter. And if staff is going to be overwhelmed by asking every little question, then I'm really not into doing that, because it's a software tool and it's going to take a lot of time to learn how to use it, to learn how to show it to us, to learn how to show it back to the constituents. That's it for it now.
Mr. Pape?
Yeah, Mayor, thanks. Yeah, I was just going to comment that I think that there is a need sometimes for both surveys and for polling. So I guess I would support trying to do both. There are a number of times I would like to know, and I don't know the answer myself, at least what the majority of our citizens might wish. And things that we've talked about in the past numerous times, and you can make a case for either way. And I give two examples. One of them is a single hauler trash service. And whether or not that's something we should pursue, we can, we know a lot of the reasons as to, you know, all the trucks going up and down and destroying our streets and cheaper cost and some of the things. But I think that a survey or a poll, I don't know which you would use in that particular case, but that it would be something useful for us to really try to get a handle on the pulse of what the community might wish concerning that particular topic. Another one is coming from the past, my past, in reference to just open burning. And, you know, we've got some people that are very adamant about health concerns and that they don't like the fact that there's smoke. But I think we have a lot of mature trees, and it's difficult to get rid of limbs. I mean, we've addressed that and trying to have a limb pick up a couple of times a year. That's helped a lot. But I'd like to find out really what the community wants, you know, prefers, I guess, whether we continue to allow open burning or whether we stop open burning. And anyway, those are two of the, I consider kind of big things that have a direct impact or kind of a major impact on the lives of our constituents, of our citizens. And I think those tools would be useful in maybe trying to get those answers to that.
So if I could ask a follow-up question to that. So when you think about getting feedback from citizens on that, are, in your mind, are you imagining just a quick question? Do you support single hauler trash service, yes or no? Would that give you the information that you need? Are you looking for something more in-depth about who actually responded to that in order to help make your decision?
Well, I think in trying to help me make a decision itself, there are a couple of things that I would need to know. One, I think it would need to be more in-depth, because I think they, to be able to say yes or no, they'd have to know some of the particulars as to, well, what money would this save me? If I was to, you know, I think we'd have to obviously know that a single hauler, you know, is going to save me, in the long run, so much money a month on my bill, I think is important to know. Also, what are some of the benefits, obviously, of having a single hauler versus, you know, having a choice? I think that there, so I mean, it could be a little complex, I guess. So I don't know that it's an easy, just yes or no, do I want single hauler? I don't think it's the question we should be asking. I think, as maybe Councilmember Hands said, or maybe you had indicated earlier, Meredith, is that they need to have, sometimes you have to have a lot of information in order to make an informed decision as to how I even really feel. So I don't think that's a good question.
Okay, so like a full staff analysis and then some level of, kind of like we do for ballot initiatives, like the communication?
Yes.
Goes along with that.
That's what I'm thinking, yeah.
Okay. And then is it important to you, just one more question, is it important to you that we really filter for Miriam-only residents as part of this?
Yes, yes. I think, that's who I'm concerned about. And also, I would, I would hope that whatever tool that we end up utilizing is that I can't have one individual out there giving me 15,000 responses and that skews my data or my information that John PQ, citizen one, got a multiple number of responses to the question and would skew the data. I would only want one response per household, per person. You know, I would hate to think that we would end up with 20,000 responses in our city, so.
So the validity of the respondent is a.
The validity of the response, that's correct.
Who else has a point? Mr. Neal? Scott, you're next.
Yeah, obviously, people, you know, realize that this is something that I've been pushing, pushing hard to improve upon in, you know, over the last couple of years that I've been on the council. I see this as, first of all, I believe that there are technologies out there that are designed specifically to handle all of these kinds of questions in terms of providing some background information that so you can do a more sophisticated survey with some of these tools at the same time as make sure that the respondents are unique and are Miriam residents. There are tools that are designed specifically for that. So those kinds of concerns, I think, can be handled. I think that there are situations that are unique decisions that may be once, you know, non-routine decisions that are significant for the community that we should at least have the ability to put information out there and get some level of feedback on, other than just putting an announcement out that there's a public meeting or to attend. Because I, my sense is that you have to be a little bit more proactive in reaching out before you make a decision. Once you make a decision with very little input, if it's, if it doesn't have the, you know, if it's not what a large percentage of our public wants, then I think we run the risk of, then everybody knows about it and then they start up getting, you know, giving us feedback. But that's really not when we should be getting the feedback. We should be getting the feedback early enough that we can possibly address the concerns they may have, you know, ahead of time. And that's, it's just real, real important. And there are tools to do that. So I'm, I believe that we, you know, we've even looked at some tools, or I've looked at some tools that would do that over the last couple of years. And I've pushed, you know, made, given you some information on some of those. And I know you've been looking at other tools as well. So I don't have a specific recommendation on a tool, but I know that things like using Google Forms to create a survey, like we did with the community center, excuse me, the old 5701 Committee, where you can basically respond to it multiple times, is not really adequate. So you have to have some more, some more capability than that. But there, again, there are tools, so.
Yeah, there are a lot of tools, is what we're finding. Part of our, my hope from tonight is that we help, we get really focused on the scope of work we want to put out to those different tools so that we can bring back some tool options that are really targeted, the needs that we've identified.
I think the time that we, that we should be using these kinds of tools are when we're making decisions that are impactful and have, they're not something that's sort of obvious to any of us. You know, I know we have this dual role of being, what was it you said, this, you know, stewards versus, or trustees versus. But that sometimes, part of, I mean, our role is we are representing the community and the residents that we, you know, in our area and across the city. And I believe that that's as important as being a trustee. You know, a trustee without information is not able to do a good job.
So a question, oh, go ahead.
I was going to say, you have a question, Mr. Neal? I was going to say, you have a question, Mr. Neal? I'll just give this, Mike over to Scott, does he have a question or something to add?
I do. So my follow-up question is, is there a, when you think about the number of people who are responding to a survey, is there a particular threshold that we would need to meet for respondents for it to be a valid data point?
Well, okay, so let's give an example here. The, when we went through West Vernon Place and looked at some of the issues and talked to people, we offered an opportunity to respond to a 10-question online survey that we put together about the 5701. And so about, we actually got half of the people to, you know, to respond and actually did the survey, sent them a, you know, a link to it. So I think those were probably more representative because we reached out to them and said, hey, we got this question, got this issue coming up, what do you think? And enough of them were interested to respond, whereas they wouldn't have responded to a notice for a public meeting. So I think you get a more, just a deeper, if you somehow reach out that there's this question, you get a, you get a, there's more interest than what I think you might otherwise find by just posting that we're going to have a public meeting. And so I don't know the answer. We got, there's a lot of people that responded relative to a small area of the city. That's really not representative. But I think as long as you're, you know, going out there and actually putting it in front of just everybody, you know, a random sample, there's a sample size, it doesn't have to be huge, it just needs to be, you know, it needs to be enough. I don't know what the answer is, but, but, you know. I just don't think we're getting enough response on certain things by just doing it the way we've been doing it. And this two-year, every, what is it, the ETC is every two years or three years?
Three years.
And there's only like one extra question, or is two extra questions that are added?
There's like, like half a page of extra questions.
Okay. I just don't think we have enough, you know, I think there's some, there's something, I'm not saying don't do that, I'm saying I think that's very useful for a different purpose. But I think you need to have something, some other tool in our toolbox that we can use judiciously, not on everything, but on things that are questions that have a large impact, major decisions that we don't obviously know the answer to because things that the public actually knows are necessarily going, they can just, you know, looking at.
Okay, Mr. DeBolt, do you have a comment?
Yes, sir, thank you. One of my major concern is the security. You know, making sure that there is just Marion respondents to anything that we put out there and control. And if possible, and again, this may be too wild, but by ward would be, would be also something that that might be more helpful to us as individual ward representatives. Obviously, we represent them and the whole city. So I know one of my concerns with this is, is just like we were just talking about, the threshold number, what's the ideal number? You know, however many residents, I mean, somebody needs to establish a number. Because again, we have to do what's best for, do what's best for the city. And I think, whatever that might be, there could be an area that doesn't like it. But that doesn't represent the whole city. And again, we have, we talked about that, as being the two things that we learned in the session we had. But that concerns me a little bit, I think, with this. Information is always a good thing, okay? Getting feedback from people is always a good thing. Controlling it seems to be my concern, right? And again, I look at all the different meetings we have. So when we do a project within our city, we don't just do it. There's a public announcement, there's a public meeting. There's always an opportunity for public to engage, right, their opinion. Now, some people don't like to go to meetings, we know that, those kind of things. So somehow, if we could tie a survey, a poll, along with those engagements with our community. And again, I'm sensitive to your time as well. I realize that in order to make that educated decision, yes or no, or we don't want this, we don't want that, takes a lot of information, takes effort on their part as well to educate themselves before making an answer, which could be another issue. Could this be somebody that doesn't like what we do? You know, again, it may not be an educated decision. So again, I think there's a lot of things here that we need to think about, other things we need to consider here before we say, yeah, we're going to take polls, we're going to take surveys, and we're going to base all our decisions off the information we get off of that. I think we need to draw, we need to step back real hard and look at some different factors there. I do like, again, I'm not against information. Again, I think you can always use that. But that has my opinion. Thank you.
Mr. Yedrick? Whitney, you're next.
Okay. So I I have a couple of thoughts on this. I think that the city does do diligence to let people know about things when they're happening and we are proactive, we post things on Facebook, you know, all that kind of stuff. But I also think that a good majority of people don't understand the civics of how local government works and that they do need to go find that information there and what it means to have a public meeting and what Cora and Koma really are. And I think any way we can reach them is great. Where I think we will always have a problem, and I think any feedback we can get is great. I'm not going to, like, come up with a solution during my comments, so don't hold your breath. I want to caution that I think there are so many places online to have conversations that we will consistently receive feedback from every single one of those saying, I didn't see the survey, I didn't get the survey, I didn't see the poll, I wasn't chosen for the poll. And either one will provide insight. I personally feel like if we're focused on progress and we're focused on transparency, surveying allows us actionable items that we can actually plan to and that we can turn into value in a longer term. But that said, polling has a time and a place and it's one of those things where you just don't know until you're there what it means. I mean, I could go on my Twitter account right now and start a poll. Lord knows I've done it before. So I just, I want us to be careful thinking that surveying is going to teach citizens how civics works and how local government works and that we're going to be able to get all the opinions that we need and that it won't ignite another another type of issue, which is, you know, choosing the people that we engage for polls and surveys. And that's all I have to say about that.
Anyone else? Mr. Naff?
Yeah, I know, I know I brought this up before, doing the survey for our 600-plus Marion businesses. Is that something we're planning to do?
Yes, so we, as part of the ETC survey, I have included a funding proposal to do an ETC survey of our businesses. So they have a survey tool that's designed specifically for that. So that is being contemplated right now.
Mr. Caldwell?
Yes, this is Chris Caldwell. In our search here for the survey tool and all that it takes to administer it, how much money are we going to be spending? And there's going to be licensing fees, there's going to be a lot of staff time involved, a lot of our time involved debating when to use it, how to use it, what are the right questions? You know, what are we planning to spend on this?
So I can speak to just the subscription fee to some of the different pieces of softwares that exist. I mean, it's somewhere in the price range of like $5,000 to $10,000 a year to get a piece of software that can validate people who respond to the survey. And so there is a cost associated with that. And, you know, just candidly, staff time is a big concern for me. I mean, it takes to put together education materials to the extent that we can help guide people to make a decision on something. I'm, you know, I think about the ballot initiatives that we do. I mean, there's a considerable amount of staff time that goes into that and it's a question we're asking folks to respond to. And so that will certainly be a consideration as we get deeper into this.
So eventually, we do have to answer, is it worth it?
Yeah, Mr. Sevins?
I see the value in surveying people. I'm still kind of trying to figure out if survey versus a poll is warranted. And I think it needs to be used very infrequently just on very important issues that affects that have large, maybe line items, large costs affects a lot of people. But I guess I have a question for Meredith, which is on those bigger issues, since lots of times there's public meetings that are involved and you're all, and staff is already pulling together information and building presentations, would it add, I know it would add time, but would it really add costs since people are already gathering that information and putting it together?
You know, I think it really, I mean, a big decision point for me or a big differentiating factor is how often we use it. And, you know, if we're using it infrequently, you know, on big issues, that's not as concerning as, you know, monthly, we are having to put together a campaign to educate on a specific topic. Or is it only for like certain segments of the population? You know, David, you brought up a great example about the West Vernon sidewalks. And, you know, that was a big decision and there was a lot of community conversation about it. And, you know, that was something we didn't know about, kind of the level of education we would need to provide on that. And it was important to the folks who lived in that neighborhood. But would that have warranted an entire communications campaign to go with it? Maybe so. But that's something that we're going to need council guidance and direction on as well. So I think, I think it will be important for us to decide how often we use that during the year and on what types of issues we use it on. Because we do have a lot of information pulled together, but when we are looking for feedback like that, a different, you look at it with a different filter. We'll have a lot of learning to do along the way as well.
Any other questions, comments? Mr. Neal? Mr. Neal, go ahead.
Yeah, and I'm very sensitive to all of those concerns, obviously. I've tried to make it clear that I think that this is something that's used judiciously. I use the word judiciously. And what that means is that it's not used all the time for everything, you know. It's used for things that are non-routine and of significant impact. As far as the costs are concerned, I know that one of the systems that we, that I looked at was like $4,000, but, you know, we could actually try it for free for a year or two. So there's some of those kinds of options out there that would be a low-cost way to sort of figure out if this is something that is useful. And so I think, you know, anytime you do something that's new, you can spend a lot of money or you can, you know, you have to spend enough money, I guess, to make sure that you're looking at the real, you know, what's really involved and the capabilities of the particular platform. But this is, you know, something that a lot of cities are dealing with. So there's definitely some technology out there that, you know, probably can do what we need at the level we need it at. Provide, an opportunity to provide some background information right along with the survey. It's kind of key, so, anyway.
I will make a note about costs. So we have the capability to do polling right now. Polling is easy and cheap to do. A number of the platforms we already do, or already use, do polling. And so that's an easy one. It's when we get into these more intensive surveys that we're going to have to purchase a piece of software to assist with those.
Mr. Sevins?
Sorry, I should have asked this earlier, but in regards to the West Vernon Place sidewalk issue that came up, are you able to tell me how, I know I'm catching you off-guard, how much money the city put back in the general fund because we didn't do that project? Because that's, I think, a way that we can determine whether $5,000 to $10,000 on a survey software can be justified when we can look back in history and see how much money an issue like West Vernon Place would have cost or saved the city.
Mr. Engel, do you have an idea on that?
On what was saved? I don't remember the figure, but it was considerably more than $5,000 or $10,000.
I was thinking it was like $170,000 or something like that.
It was considerably more than 5,000 or 10,000. I don't want to give you a figure because I don't have one off the top of my head.
And did you have a comment while you were on there?
I did. It's more just a rhetorical question, but I don't necessarily know that there's an answer to it. But I think to synthesize the comments that I've heard from the council this evening, and it's one of the things that we're going to need to wrap our heads around as we go through this process to determine how we want to do this, is from what I'm hearing, I think there's a clear understanding on the council that the simple questions that we can ask, open burning, I think sidewalks, people understand those things, those are things that, you know, single hauler, we can explain those things and people can understand that concept pretty easily and wrap their head around it or get brought up to speed and then they can answer a yes or no question. It seems to me like all of the suggestions, or I shouldn't say all of them, but many of these scenarios that have been played out of where we perhaps need a more robust tool are things where we have had meetings and we've had presentations and there's been deliberation. And we have, as staff and you as the policymakers, have been immersed in this topic, whatever that topic is, and we still can't come to a decision on which is the right way to go. If we have to produce that much information and the people that are immersed in that information can't make a good decision or they're unwilling to make that decision because they feel like there's not enough information, I guess my question is, why do we think that we could put that out to the public in any sort of digestible form to where they could make an answer on a simple binary yes or no? Because generally, these questions aren't asked open-ended, they're not asked in a manner of what would you like to see with this situation? We give them the information and they answer yes or no. And so I guess the question is, is if council is not comfortable answering a question based on all the informations that produced, then either that's a failure of staff or there's some sort of breakdown in the council or council members' ability to feel like they can take that information and make a meaningful policy decision with it. So I guess I want to just make sure that council acknowledges that if you have difficulty answering questions, the public likely would have a very similar question, we are very difficulty with it, and we would have an even more difficult time trying to interpret what tens or hundreds or thousands of people answered that question. Did they understand the question? Did they truly read the question? If we've had multiple meetings and we have a campaign that we put out there, that's a lot of information that we'd be asking people to read all the way through, fully comprehend, ask questions, as you as the policymakers get the opportunity to, and then kick out a yes, no, A, B, green, whatever the answer is, in some sort of meaningful way. So again, not necessarily looking for an answer, I think we just need to make sure that we recognize that most of the questions that I think people have the desire to ask the public about that are truly difficult and don't necessarily have a right, right, there are wrong, wrong, or there's multiple right answers. That's why sometimes we have representative democracy, is so that you can make those decisions so we can educate the few as opposed to the many, because the many may just not have the time or the inclination to want to have that answer. So not to say that we, that surveying and polling don't have their place, they absolutely do. I just want to make sure that we don't expect that there's going to be this, there's this... I just want to make sure that we don't expect that there's going to be this, there's this, there's this one size fits all answer that we can simply just go, hey, we don't know the answer to this, hit the button and all of a sudden we have a good answer and we know it by word and it's gonna, it's gonna make everybody happy. So I just want to make sure that that's clear. I think Meredith's done a good job of digesting all of that. We'll see what we can do to get back to everybody.
Mr. Neal, good response.
Yeah, yeah, I want to make, kind of make two points. While I, I understand that, I think that the timing of when you solicit information is important. So before you go to a lot of work and have these meetings, just the, and the second is a proactive outreach that we're actually even going to discuss the, these matters, you know, in an early stage before we actually have these meetings is when you, you know, I think that that kind of a tool is most effective. It, it does two things. It lets the public know if it's proactive and gets out to, you know, to our residents, it gets them aware that we're even, you know, getting ready to discuss it. And secondly, you know, it's not a yes, no question at that point. It's a sort of a sense of what, you know, what people think about a particular thing that got, that, that will hopefully guide us to, to make our, our public meetings more, you know, better attended or, you know, and as we, you know, later in the process, you know, we can put up the information, you know, as a reference if we, if we get to a yes, no question. But I mean, I just think having the tool available for the big, you know, for our big decisions is, is just another good governance approach that again, used judiciously will help us.
So as I understand it, we, we should ask, we should ask a question before we have all the information prepared and ask people's opinion before we do the work to actually provide the research.
Well, I, you know, I think, I think there are times where at the early stages, you know, you, you have many, you know, you have, you have a variety of options to consider. And whether or not, you know, we or, or, or staff think, have, you know, a certain direction, we, we think that everybody should go and, and exclude some other options, you know, it's, it's oftentimes a, a good to get a sense of what the public thinks in general about something. And so that we can hone in on the right, you know, the right set of direct, you know, directions to consider and do the more detailed work. I think actually you save some money that way too, even by just, you know, staged approach. Yeah, we're going to be talking about the, and you know, blah, blah, whatever it is or whatever issue is, we're getting ready to do a sidewalk infill program, you know, and you know, what kinds of things, you know, or a sense of, of walkability in the city or whatever it is at an early stage that gives us some, some guidance. And as Scott was saying, it may vary area by area within the community. And that gives us a sense of that as well, so we can hone in on, on it. It's just another, another tool in the toolbox, so.
No one else has come up? Maybe I should conclude by saying my only concern is that, as, as was stated, that we, we reduce, make sure that we're including Marion residents. But I would go away one step further and say, not just Marion residents, but Marion taxpayers, our businesses do represent a large portion of our city. If we're talking about something like a dog park in the middle of the downtown business district, I would definitely want our businesses to have an input on whether they want that next door to them or not. Maybe they do, maybe they don't care. I have no sense for that. But that, that is going to be a, you know, something that they're going to be dealing with more than the people who live in my neighborhood or somebody way up north or whatever. So we need to make sure that our businesses have the ability to be plugged into the, maybe the polls or the surveys that might apply to their area. And then there definitely needs to be a way, I don't know how you do it, there's technology there, where we can absolutely make sure that this answer is coming from someone who pays taxes to the city of Marion. And that was, I would, I would really strongly suggest that that be a component in whatever it is to, to decide it. Okay. I think we've covered that pretty well. I hope that staff has some direction. I know there's differing opinions about that. I think it's an important tool. Maybe they can take that to the next step or decide where they need to go, or maybe bring it back and say, hey, I think this is what I thought I, we gained from it and I want to make sure and verify at a later time or whatever. Let's go ahead and move on. The next item on our agenda is the Marion use of force policy. I think Chief McClellan is going to dial in here in a moment and, and give us a report on, on, on this issue. And then again, we're going to reserve our questions till after it's over with and, and if you have slides, go ahead and load them up and we'll get going.
Good evening, Marion Council. I appreciate the opportunity to be able to kind of give you a little bit of a 10,000 foot view of our use of force policies, training, things like that with recent events. We've, I've been inundated and City Ministry has been inundated with questions not only from our citizens, but from some of our council and some people outside of our, our city wanting to know what we do and, and certain things. So I, out of all those questions we received, I put together a few questions to kind of answer in broad general as to what our philosophies are, what we do, don't do as it relates to these questions. This is by no means getting deep into, you know, specifics. Those are conversations that willing to have, can have, but it takes a little bit of nuance and some background to answer some of these questions that arise out of this. And willing to do that as the situation needs. Next slide, please, Meredith. Cover that one, next one, please. So do we allow chokeholds? And chokeholds are defined as holes that restrict the airway. We do not train. It is a violation of our policy or any technique that restricts the airway of a person, whether it's a chokehold or standing up or kneeling on someone's throat. It is just not within policy. We do not train that. You train the use of carotid restraint hold does not restrict airways. It's been something that the Marion Police Department has used for many years. Considered chokehold. Do we have a policy regarding requiring intervention by our officers in cases of excessive force by other officers? Yes, our policy does make that mandatory. It is also part of our training. We train on policies and use of force. Next slide, please. Does the Police Department ban officers from shooting at moving or from moving vehicles? Our policy does state officers should only discharge a firearm at a moving vehicle or its occupants when the officer reasonably is. There are not other reasonable means available to hurt the threat of a vehicle or deadly force other than vehicles directly off or others. We train our officers as part of the policy and part of the things that if, if possible to move out of the way of a moving vehicle. However, there is no prohib, just outright prohibition shooting a vehicle because there are situations where that is feasible to have to do. So it's not an absolute, but it is a last resort. Does the Marion Police Department have a use of force continuum? Continuums for the most part are, are one of those things where if this, then this. We don't have a continuum for a bunch of reasons that I can go into in just a little bit of a presentation. We use an objectionally reasonable standard to accomplish legitimate law enforcement purposes. We train officers in de-escalation techniques to avoid force whenever possible and once the subject's under control, forces stop it immediately, immediately and it is to be given to the suspect. The objective reasonable standard has been in place since about 1989 when I started and it's due to a court case, a Supreme Court case called Brown versus Connor. And the, the court has looked at, at what objectionable reasonableness is and has defined it accordingly. So, next slide, please. Does Marion Police Officer make officers who have used force write a report under those incidents reviewed? Absolutely every use of force that our officers do, they require to write a report. That use of force is then reviewed by the supervisor. And then that use of force is then also reviewed by a use of force panel that's made up of the division commanders, usually another sergeant that wasn't involved in the incident. And then that report is forwarded to me. We review not only for compliance to policy, but we review for any training issues that we identify for performance feedback so that it can also be a learning experience if the situation is such. Next slide, please. Do we require officers to give warnings before using force? Yes, we train and require to give warnings when feasible. However, we also recognize that there are incidents, although rare, that an officer may not have the opportunity to issue warning prior to being forced to defend themselves or a citizen. How does the Marion Police Department monitor job performance to ensure that they are doing their jobs correctly? We have lots of tools available to us that we use. First of all, we do biannual job performance evaluation. So everybody in the city gets it yearly. However, we do twi- two a year. And this between the officers and the, and their supervisors. We have regular training on policy and use of force throughout the department. Our supervisors are required to do random reviews of incarn body camera videos of all their officers. Just come at random and watch them and see how they're interacting with citizens. We investigate all use of force incidents and officer complaints that come into us. Next slide, please. Do we regularly review our policies and training practices? Yes. It is in policy that we have to review our policy manual at least once per year. However, by practice, we are reviewing it several times a year. We use a company called Lexipol that helps us formulate policy. They also review our policies. Anytime there's a change in federal, state law or any kind of nationally recognized best practices, Lexipol will generate a change to policy. We review it, decide whether or not it meets our, our job needs, acceptable, and we can prove it, we can modify it, or we can reject it. Those are the options available to us. So it's not just they are shoving stuff at us and we're taking it. There is a review. We also have a training committee which reviews training needs and anything that needs to be updated or trained or changed or added or even taken away, they bring that. It's made up of officers who are, are training officers. So that's from a ground up instead of a top down approach. And that's pretty much how we handle our review of policy and training.
I think this is all I have.
Yeah, I think that's it.
Okay.
Again, that's just an overview of some conceptual things. I'd be able to take any questions. Like I said, some of the stuff, be more than happy to sit with you face to face and go over it. It's, it's detail that need be. I also would recommend that you attend, if you haven't already, our Citizens Academy. We're having one this year. It's a really good tool for people to come in because we talk about use of force. We talk about our training, you get to see how we train. You're not getting taught by me or, or, or the administrators, you're actually getting taught by our officers who are learning it, our officers who teach it. So it's really good insight as to why we do what we do. And they love questions, they love telling people why they do it and they're very passionate. And I encourage each and every one of you, if you haven't done it, to do it. It's a great experience.
Okay. Thank you very much, Chief. When you asked a question, do you have any questions? I had several hands go up, so I'm going to take them in the order that I saw them first. Mr. Neal, I think yours, you're pretty fast with that hand, so I want to give you the option here, right ahead.
Yeah, I actually had a couple of questions. First of all, I want to say that I have the utmost respect and, and appreciation for the work of our public safety team. And I, I just, you guys are great. Obviously with what's going on, you know, in the country, there's a lot of questions. And so I was wondering, I have two questions. The first one has to do with a carotid hold. I forgot the technical name for it, but I saw on TV tonight, a video of a, a New York City, a police officer that was suspended. You know, he was videotaped using what I think was, could have been a carotid hold as opposed to, you know, an airway suppression, but it was a neck, a neck hold that rendered the suspect probably unconscious, I don't know. Could you explain the carotid hold and how that works? And what is that? Is that something that, the level of danger of that as compared to, you know, any kind of a chokehold where you're constricting the artery? I just need, I mean, I don't know enough about it and I just want to kind of understand it. And I think it'd be helpful for, you know, for the public. So that's my number one question.
Not to get too technical because, you know, there's hours and hours of briefing that the officers receive in regards to this. Hold is basically a hold that, you know, once you grab them around the, the neck, the head area, you control the body. So it's a control hold designed to control movement as well as it restricts blood flow through the carotid arteries, which are these arteries here in your neck. It does not completely restrict blood flow to the brain. The brain has, one, it doesn't completely shut down the blood flow in those arteries. And two, there's another artery that goes up in the back of your neck that's completely untouched by this and is supplying blood and oxygen to the brain. As with all tools that we use, there is an inherent danger in all of them. There's an inherent danger with pepper spray. There's an inherent danger with taser. It, it's just what those level of dangers are and, and how you mitigate those. You know, we teach people to do baton strikes, so we're not striking at the head. But in a fight where you have a struggling suspect and he ducks and you hit him in the head, it's not intentional, but you just done something very severe damage to somebody by hitting him in the head with a baton potentially. Those things happen. So I don't have a tool that I can give my officers that's going to guarantee that nothing bad will ever happen. When you're in a fight, you're in a fight and it's not controlled, it's not, it's messy and it's unfortunate. And we do everything we can to train our people to get in there, use the tools we give them that they're trained with in it quickly so there aren't long struggles. The longer struggles go on, the longer you have to fight people, the longer you have to engage them, more apt, they're going to get hurt and we're going to get hurt. So we give them several different tools. The carotid is one of them and we teach them how to properly use it. We teach them when, when they need to stop using it. We teach them how to recognize what they need to do afterwards, render aid, notify the supervisor, get an ambulance en route. All these things are done, it's all one part of package. I wish I could tell you that there was a, there was a magic thing out there that caught, had no potential to cause harm to anybody. There isn't. That's just the unfortunate thing about things. We review these things. We've looked at this hold in particular with the events that come on. I've talked to the supervisors, I've talked to the trainers, we reviewed how many times we've used it in the past and, and, and things like that. You know, we still think it's an effective tool, a limited tool, but it has its place if incorrectly and if done with the other things that we've talked about in conjunction with it. So, you know, it's always something that we always have to review these things and these are great questions. I think the public needs to be aware of why we do these things. So these are good conversations to have.
If I could add to that, just as a visual representation, basically what you're talking about is you're talking about putting the sides of someone's neck against the bicep and the forearm. Their windpipe, their windpipe, when, when properly applied is, is touching nothing. So basically what you're doing is you're applying pressure to the side of the neck.
Mr. Neal, did you want to have your second question? Then I'll go with Whitney next.
Sure, yeah. In the, in your presentation, I think it was the second slide, I, I don't know, but you talked about the Supreme Court, there's sort of a subjective phrase there.
Objectively reasonable?
Right, objectively reasonable. And then it, it went on to say to affect legitimate law enforcement or something. I don't know if, if you got it, can you, is there any way you could read that back? Cause I was, I have a question about that.
Use force when it's objectionable, reasonable? Use force when it's objectionable and reasonable and only to the amount necessary to accomplish a legitimate law enforcement purpose.
Okay, yeah, that, and that was, obviously there's a lot of room for interpretation in what, you know, is objectively reasonable and almost anything can be a legitimate law enforcement purpose. So there's, is there some, and I'm sure it's part of the training, some guidance that, you know, somebody who's, you know, maybe being cited for a traffic violation, you know, is not the level of objectively reasonable response for, you know, certain kinds of law enforcement activities are very. And so is there some, something more? I don't know, more?
Yes.
Than that broad sort of?
Yes, there's something more, the courts have outlined what it is that you're supposed to take into consideration is what makes it objectionable and reasonable. So the things are, is one, objectional reason this comes from, you know, what a reasonable officer do what this officer did. So it looks in a totalitarian of, okay, well, a well-trained officer with this many years of experience, do what this officer did. The second thing is, is, you know, what are the circumstances? What's the level of resistance at the offender? You know, and what was the officer aware of at the time that the force was acting upon? So there's no hindsight, there's no 2020. The court said that it is not, it is not reasonable for us to look back and and take facts into consideration that the officer at the time did not know when they had to engage in this use of force. So it's all from the perspective of what a reasonable officer facing these similar circumstances and like, only known to the facts of the officer at the time, would that officer, would another officer have done something similar? And so the courts have taken a look at this and they've decided that they didn't want to come in with an if then type mentality as to what forces, because they understand that the dynamics of human encounters and each situation is different because the people that you're dealing with are all different. And each officer themselves are different, because an officer who stands five foot four and weighs a buck twenty-five soaking wet is going to have a different force option than an officer that weighs 235 pounds and is muscular. And it all depends on what they're facing. If that same officer that's five foot two is facing some guy that's six foot one and weighs 250 pounds and is built, you know, like someone that works out all the time or opposed to the officer that's six foot one and built similarly and is facing a five foot two woman. Their options are reasonable, how they approach each one of those situations. Their force options are going to be absolutely different. And to put in parameters that, you know, say, well, this officer has to react exactly this one does and has to do this exactly the same way. It's just not a realistic approach to what they face on a real day-to-day basis. And so that's why the, there's no quote unquote continuum, because you have to write rules in the continuum to take all those things into effect. So I can write a continuum, we pack continuums here when I first started. Then you have to say, but if this situation happens, you get to ignore the continuum and you get to go over here. Well, and in fact, you've just ruined the continuum because you're putting a bunch of things into the rules that say you can ignore these rules if this situation happens, which is actually reasonably reasonable stat or definition that the Supreme Court was made clearing room versus comment. That make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense. I guess I'm just, I'm trying to figure out a way to assure the public that there is some understanding that, you know, when, if there's a minor offense, that yes, would subject somebody to arrest and possibly, you know, a ticket or something, you know, maybe a little worse than that. That at what point? You know, I just don't want, you know, I just, obviously like most of the public wants to make sure that things don't escalate. So the issue and thing is really important, I think.
Well.
Training in that.
Right, and the officers are trained how to de-escalate and they are taught, you know, this is what this tool is used for, as far as, you know, you use this when you're faced with this level of resistance and this thing. But the answer to your question is, is that, you know, whether we're arresting someone for a traffic warrant or arresting someone for a felony, the reaction the officers are gonna take to use force is always based on how the person we're arresting is resisting. So you can have the felon who doesn't do anything and they're just handcuffed and put in the back of the car. You can have the traffic warrant who decides they're gonna pull out a knife and resist with the deadly force. I mean, so the situations, doesn't really matter what they're being arrested for per se. It has to do with how that person is acting towards the officer and resisting arrest. That's how we base our use of forces on. It's always, what is that person doing to resist? What options do you have available that meet this requirement? So, and so that's where the training comes into place, that's where the policy's come into place, where we focus on, okay, this is where you can use your firearm for these kind of reasons. This is where you can use your taser for these kind of reasons. This is where you don't. This is, you know, these are the things you have to worry about, you know. So those are all factors that are taken in consideration when we train and run our policy in other ways. But it is truly based not on what the person is being arrested for, it's based on how that person resists or doesn't resist the officers when they're being harassed.
Whitney, did you have questions? I'll move to you.
I do. So you and I have talked a lot about this topic. So I just want to say on record, I appreciate your time and the time that you've made for me and all of my questions because I believe that our police force does a great job in my experiences with them. They have been compassionate and they work very hard to ensure policy and did threaten to put me in the holding cell once on a ride along, but I declined. But we wouldn't be having this discussion if my experiences were the only ones that happened. So, and I'm definitely not here to be part of cancel culture and you know that I believe Black Lives Matter. So you and I are on the same page and now it's on the record. So since we've last talked, a lot of municipalities and states have not just banned chokeholds, but banned, Cool Mildred has opinions too, but banned all LVNRs, lateral vascular neck restraints, right? My dad demonstrated both on me this weekend and neither were comfortable. What other options exist for use of force outside of LVNRs that you might think would be effective in the field but not have the same stigma? Is that the right word to associate with it? I don't want to.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying and there are, there are other, there's always options for, for things. Whether or not they're good options or bad options is just depending on the situation. Like I said, we don't use the LVNR carotid hold very often. We've only used it four times in the last five years. So it's very situational. It's very, the officers just don't go and start throwing neck restraints on people. It has to be, you know, they're dealing with a very violent subject and they're in a ground fight. What are the options if you don't use the LVNR? And you're having to deal with a very violent individual? You're gonna be grabbing them, you're going to be dogpiling them, you're going to be using your baton, you're gonna be using your taser. Those are all good options. They're not always the best option. And the trouble with some of those, like jumping on somebody and trying to control them with, with masks, it doesn't look any better than, than a neck restraint looks. It usually takes longer to do some of these. So you're engaged, like I said earlier, with a person much, much longer, which again, every time that you're having a fight, the longer it takes to subdue them, no matter what you're using, the risk increased dramatically for the officers and for that individual. So, you know, it is a, it is an effective tool when it's used correctly and it would just be removing a tool from the toolbox and having the officers in those situations where it was needed, not being able to use it, they would have to resort to something else. I can't tell you situation, based on situation, if those choices they're gonna be making without that tool are gonna be better or worse. And I can't even tell you that it's gonna look better or worse to the public when they see what the options are that we have to use to, you know, subdue a violent offender. Those are things that each individual person upon watching what we do and listening to explanation, they have to make up for themselves. And this is a national conversation, I understand that some people are, rightfully so, looking at all these things. I just don't have an answer for your question in that, what would be better? I could just tell you what we would be losing. I could tell you that we would be losing something that has been effective, has been safe for all these years. We've had some form of LVNR slash carotid hold for years that I've been here.
Well, knowing that, I think a step for me in a good transparent direction is that knowing you've used it four times in five years. Yeah, it's information that is helpful from my perspective. I don't think, oh, I did have one other question about, if that's okay, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
About the use of force review panel. Is anyone on the use of force panel outside of the police department? It's not, okay. Are there, this is something that's come up as community oversight becomes a topic of discussion, including other professionals in a review panel? Like physician or mental health expert or social worker or something like that?
Are you asking if we're considering that?
No, I'm asking if you think it would be helpful to have an outside perspective.
You know, it depends on who that outside person is. So, and it depends on what level of training the outside person is willing to receive. Because if you don't understand each type of force option that's available and you don't really have a good background on, on use of force training and the legal aspects of it, then what we're getting is someone who looks at it and we're gonna get their opinion on based on how it looks. And that's sometimes not a bad thing, but it's not, it's not, it's not something that you can really hang a lot of substance on to as for was it actually a good or a bad use of force? You need people who are vested into what are the legal requirements? What are the, what's the policy? What is the training? What is the situation at hand? And so we have talked about what you're, what you're talking about. And, you know, I think for some large agencies that have a lot of use of forces that are questionable, I think that is not necessarily a bad thing, just provide some openness to the process. I don't know that I need it on my panels for what we do here. But I'm not opposed to the openness as far as, you know, having these types of conversations. You know, we do publish some general information in our annual report about our use of forces. And I think, you know, they're always, we're always willing to answer questions to the extent that we're able. So conversations to me about things like this on a local level on a, I think are good and a way to address, especially for us now, you know, I'm being a little bit selfish here and then I'm just talking about Marion. So, but this is the only thing I can control is what we do here. And I think by how our citizens, you know, comment on how we're doing it, how they're talking to you about our job, I think the proof is in the pudding that we have it right here. You know, I can't tell you how they should be doing it in Kansas City, Kansas and Minneapolis or anywhere else, because I don't have any control over what they do. And our situation here in Marion is a lot different. So, but I am confident in that I'm, that we're doing it right here. And we're always willing to talk about it and, you know, tweak things as we need to. But I think what, what we've been doing before all this happened, these are not any things we put in place as a result of these last tragic events. I think this is proof that what we have in place is actually working for our officers and our citizens.
Hey, Darren, I'd like to add to that. We also, we do have one other level of review and that's through the city administrator. He personally reviews these cases. In fact, he and I talked about this recently. He has seen the videos, he's questioned the chief about what happened, what was appropriate. He is not a police officer and he doesn't come from a policing background. So he's looking at it from the standpoint of what, you know, is this something that creates a liability for the city? Is this something that requires extra training? Is this something that's appropriate? And he is a professional in the sense that he's trained to be an administrator of a city. So these are, that's a good place to come from when you're looking at these things. The public also has a couple of other options. There's the Community Relation Service with the federal government. If we had someone, for example, that we arrested and they felt like their civil rights were violated, there are federal agencies that can be called upon by anyone who feels that that's the case and they will investigate the city of Marion. I know as chief of police, when I was chief, we were investigated two or three times on, on some arrest situations. It didn't necessarily involve abuse. What was claimed to be abuses, but just the arrests and whether or not they were biased. So there are other agencies out there, FBI also investigates abuses for civil rights violations. So our officers, like all officers, are subject to that level of review as well. And so it's not just like it comes to our group, they, they talk about and that's the end of it. The person wants to pursue it, there's ways to pursue it at no cost to them. There's several other hands. I think, Mr. Silver, I saw you, do you have one, you have a comment?
Yeah, thank you, this is Mr. Silver's. First of all, I want to start off by saying that I really appreciate what the mayor wrote in response to a question that was posed to him and other local mayors in regards to the events that have happened recently. It really made me proud to live in the city of Marion with a mayor who feels the way that you do. I also want to thank the chief for being here today, because it's probably not easy to take questions like these without checking them out beforehand. So I really appreciate that. I want to also say, I did take the police, the Citizens Police Academy program. I think back in 2014, maybe 2015, I really enjoyed it and I really do recommend it. I actually have responded to people's emails that I received over the past week with the URL to sign up for that course. So hopefully you get a full course. My question is, can you tell me what kind of training your officers receive in regards to dealing with people with visible and maybe not so recognizable disabilities that could sometimes turn into a situation that excessive force might be used if officers unaware of the fact that someone has a disability?
Well, I guess the, the things that we do are, and I'm trying to just, you say disability, but I think what you're really asking is more, you know, like it's physical disabilities, they can see. I think you're talking more like probably mental health type.
No, actually, the deaf community has a very difficult time, especially with being pulled over on traffic stops because they can't comply. It's not very apparent that they have a disability. And sometimes, actually probably more often than it should, they are, they have excessive force applied to them. And also people maybe with strokes or muscular disabilities that prevent them from fully complying.
Sure, and we deal with members of deaf community probably a lot more often than people with and other disabilities. And it's all situational. So here's, you know, we train our officers to look for, you know, clues as to why is someone not acting the way that most normal people do when they interact with the police. But the problem is, is that it all depends on what they're doing at the time, what the officers are investigating. So, meaning if it's a traffic violation, you're dealing someone with deaf or has some sort of other issue like you were talking about, there's time in there. And so there's, the officers have the ability to figure out what is going on, what, what is the communication issue? What, what is the communication issue here? And can deal with it accordingly. And they do a great job of doing that. However, if they're involved in some sort of disturbance or flight or whatever the case may be, these disabilities that you're talking about actually look like and can be masked by the fact that people under the influence of alcohol, people under the influence of drugs can display some of the similar issues that these other people do. The trouble when you have an issue where you're having to subdue somebody, whether it's because of they're not listening to you because they're, they're trying to resist you or they don't understand if they're involved in some sort of violent encounter, the officers are going to treat that the same. They're going to treat the level, use the level of force necessary to stop whatever it is, is going on. The, whether it's violence against the officer or violence against another person or them trying to harm themselves. And then once they have that under control, then they stop and can assess as to, okay, why is it I'm here and what is going on? But, you know, so we have to get to the point to where there can be calm and, and reason and figure out what's going on. You can't do it in the middle of someone that's in crisis. And if they're started, if the officers get there and it's in crisis, they have to stop the crisis. Now, they, they have techniques, they have, you know, ability to try to talk through the problem. But if it escalates, then the officer is going to have to deal with that regardless of what's causing it. And then figure out, once it's all calm, what happened and what the best course of action is after that point. So that's a great question, but again, there's lots of nuances in there to say, yeah, but sometimes you can't tell someone's diabetic or they're drunk. And if they're driving a car and you're asking them to get out, is it a drunk trying to fight you or someone in a diabetic, having a diabetic issue? Well, you just have to get the person secure and stop the violence and then figure out where you're at and what happened. And that's exactly what the Graham B. Connor case is all about, actually. It's a good point. It actually was someone who was diabetic, who was causing the disturbance, not because he was wanting to cause a disturbance because he was having a diabetic issue, but the officers didn't know that. And so they just had to deal with the problem at hand. And that's what generated what, what the case is, the screw court case. So it's all about situations. It's all about what the officers know at the time and it's all about what the, what the person is doing. So it's our goal, you know, to get these things stopped with as minimal amount of injury and to anybody. The officers don't want to hurt people. The officers don't want to get hurt. They want people to be safe. But again, we're always reacting to what people are doing. And so, you know, that's what dictates what level of force is going to happen.
Okay, very good. Anybody have, raise your hand if you have a question? Bob, hey, and Brian, you're next.
Yeah, Chief, I, oh.
Where'd you go, Bob?
I just, I just hit the wrong button. That was my, my bad. Chief, I was, I was just curious if you could share with, with us and the, and the rest of the public that might be viewing this evening. In your 30-plus years as being on the Merriam police force, how many officer-involved shootings where they've actually had to discharge the weapon at a, at a car or at a person have, have we encountered? That was none?
None.
Yeah. I, I think that's important to know that, that people realize that we take that very serious and we're not just doing, shooting at fleeing cars or, you know, as we've seen in some of the other previous cases itself. Yeah, I'm very proud of our police department, the great job that women do on our service. The, the other thing that I was wondering if, and I guess I could have asked this at a different time, but you know, we get a weekly report from your chief of just incidents itself. Could you share with us when you're giving us those weekly reports, the times that you've had to, or when in the future, when you've had to use force, you know, some sort of restraint or something that, I mean, you've indicated there were very few times that you, you've only used four or five times in four years, the carotid maneuver, but just use of force as you've had to. Yeah, I know that doesn't occur very often, but.
We, I, I mean, that's absolutely not a problem. It can be indicated somehow. You're going to get bored because we only average one use of force a week.
A week.
So, you know, there's, there's not going to be a lot there. Happy to, to, in, in some form or fashion, share that information with you when use of force or, but there's, there's not going to be a lot of, you know, interest in reading. So we just, we average 52 a year. You know, it's been fairly consistent for the last three years. You know, it's a very small percentage. We make about 1,200 arrests a year. So we're talking about 4% of all the arrests that we make, we have to use some level of force. That's all forces. That's just, that's across the board, you know, from the, hey, we had to put someone on the ground because they were resisting to, you know, we had to point a weapon because of circumstances. Whether it be a case or whatever. So it's very little that our officers are having to do as far as our forces, our use of force goes. So it's not, it's not that exciting, but that's one of the blessings of working with such a professional police department and working in this wonderful city. So we're happy to share the information. We can sit down and talk about how we do that.
Thank you. And I knew the answer to that, but I knew that there were others that did not know that answer and how rare that that occurs. But I think you're sharing that with us though would, would at least allow us to, to be able to speak authoritatively when we're asked that question, you know, how often is this occurring that we know that? I appreciate that. Thank you.
As the official Merriam Police Department historian, I can tell you the last time a Merriam police officer shot his weapon, that's at least been reported is 1975. An officer shot at an off, an individual who was fleeing the scene of a sexual assault. It was up at 75th Street in their I-35. He missed. The person was arrested and ultimately charged. But that's, as far as I know, that's the last time we have had police officers shoot in Merriam. They weren't Merriam. We used to have people from Lenexa and other places getting shootouts as they drove through the city, but it did not involve any of our, our officers thankfully. So, okay, I saw Mr. Nap, I think you had a question?
Yes, Chief, per our conversation this afternoon, could you talk about the process if a citizen does have a complaint against a Merriam police officer? Talk about that process and then what is, been a typical complaint against a Merriam police officer?
Yeah, there are many options for people to file complaints depending on what the complaint is. But we have forms here at the police department that anybody can come in and fill out. They don't have to talk to anybody. They can just fill it out, turn it in, and then it's forwarded to the division commander, who will look at it and either investigate it themselves or pass it down to the officer's direct supervisor to be investigated. They can call the supervisor. They can even make a report to another officer if that's who they find. And they can say, hey, I got a report, we have an imple, that has to be forwarded up because they have to be in writing. They don't have to give their name. It makes it hard to investigate, don't give us any information, but it happened. But regardless how we get the complaint, whether it's through email, we even look at stuff that comes in on Facebook from time to time. We'll see something that looks like a complaint. We track it down and we don't ever hear back from these people. It's more of an event thing, but we look at it because more likely than not, we either have a report associated to it or a video or something. And so if it's something that we can look at, we do. And we do so for lots of different reasons. One is, you know, we'll provide feedback that's constructive to our officers. And sometimes, most of these complaints, the vast majority of these complaints are always unfounded. But a lot of times it's just sitting down with the person who made the complaint and, and talking about why the officer did what they did and explain things out. And we can usually resolve those in that fashion. If it's a racial profiling complaint, again, they can do everything I just told you about, but they also have an option with sending a, a report to the AG, the Attorney General's Office of the state of Kansas. And then the AG's office or KC Post will investigate that complaint to see if there's any validity to it. It happens every now and then. We've never had a substantiated complaint for the AG's office. Most of the time, again, it's just people not happy with, not the performance of the officer, just unhappy with the outcome of their contact and so that they file it. Yeah, that's to be expected. You know, that's why we got video cameras back in 2009 and in-car cameras. You know, way before that, it wasn't because we were concerned that our officers were out there doing things that they shouldn't have been doing. It was because it was to protect them from the complaints we were getting and the officers, I didn't say that. And, you know, and we substantiated now that, you know, we have these videos. Vast majority of times it'll be happening, you know, your officers are doing what they're supposed to be doing. They are being professional. So the body cameras, the in-car cameras, the, the, investigating these complaints is always, it's always been a positive thing for the Merriam Police Department because we have good people and they're doing the job and they care about their interactions with people they serve. And so I, this, this openness is, this videos, all this stuff doesn't concern me a bit because I can point to any of them and say, yeah, our officers are doing what they need to be doing. Chris Ingalls even had to look at a couple of videos when he's received emails from people and he's like, yep, officers are doing exactly what they need to be doing. I am just impressed by the patience that they have and their ability to, you know, take what's thrown at them and just do what they have to do. I admire that about this group of officers we have. You think the mayor, that sometimes I may not have been as patient in my early days as I should have been. You know, I learned, but are much better at than I ever was. I appreciate that truly too, and I tell them that on a regular basis. You guys would be very impressed if he sees just half of the stuff that's thrown at him and how they respond. These are very, very, very patient people.
If, if I could add on to that, absolutely. I will tell you that I have never reviewed a video and, and been anything less than impressed. I, if people, if they have complaints, if they send even through, through the issue, the, the horrible things that, that have, the tragedy that's occurred in Minneapolis and the, some of the concerns that people have shared with me. I share my personal cell phone number. I take this very seriously. I don't know if the council knows this or not, but I mean, I do review those with, with, and try to be very objective to them. And to be honest with you, to try to think, how would I feel if I was the person that was being pulled over? I try to look at it really slanted towards the, them more so than our officers. And, and I absolutely have not seen one where I was not impressed and where it, it wasn't wrong. I mean, there, it, you, you would be surprised and impressed if you saw the videos. There, there are officers, not to defend them, but they, but I can't help but defend them. It's because they, they do an outstanding job sometimes in places where I, I would have snapped and a reasonable person would have snapped. And you see their training, their patience and their maturity shine through. I mean, sometimes we're talking about folks that are 23, 24 years old that are handling a situation better than maybe a 50 or 60-year-old would handle it because of their training that they get at the academy, because of the training that we place, the emphasis we place on training here. Again, I, I have yet to see a video where I'm not impressed with what our men and women do and what they deal with every day. It is, it is fantastic, which is why I believe this is, it's a great conversation to have here. And, and there's nothing to hide in, in what we're doing because we do it right. We absolutely do it right. Not every department does. If you're a big department, if you've got 300 officers, you've got unions and things to deal with. Sometimes you have different dynamics at play. We've got a small department. We've got 30 sworn officers. We have that body cam footage, the car footage, we use that in training. I mean, we, and we are not scared to wash people out if people need to be washed out of our organization. We do that. We've done that since I've been here. For sometimes things that maybe would be lesser offenses than in other departments, but we can afford to do that and we've made a commitment. We believe that you as the council and our public have made a commitment to having good community policing. And, and that's what, that's, that's what I, that's what I'm dedicated to. That's what I'm here to try to enforce and carry out and, and, and share with the, the chief and his captains. And again, they do a heck of a job. They truly do. So I, I appreciate the comments, but, but I can tell you from my perspective as, as the city administrator, I, I am, I'm as comfortable as I can be with them. That doesn't mean mistakes won't happen, but I, I'm very, very comfortable with the training that they have.
One thing I'd like to add real quick is the one thing we haven't talked about, but I think is as important, and I, I know that, I think you ought to, when this comes up, you know, talk to your constituents about, is the community policing that Chris brought up. There's a reason why our officers are out there doing birthday parades. There is a reason why our officers are out there doing coffee with a cop. It's to build that community relationship. And it's a lot harder to have officers out there who are doing bad things when they feel they're part of the community. And that has been something that Chief System, Mayor System has, you know, started when I started and it's always been an important part and we have just built on that continuously. And so it's, it's hard for, you know, for officers not to think of anything other than, hey, they're part of the Merriam community and, and what they do affects it. And I think it's, again, we're, we live a little bit of an isolated bubble in that, you know, even after all these things have happened, the, our officers have gained 100 pounds from all the food that citizens are bringing to, thanking us for being part of the community. I think it's to fatten us up so we can't chase them anymore, catch them. But so again, that just tells me we're doing it right. And I, I'm only saying that not to pat ourselves on the back, but to allow you all to have the information when you talk to your constituents to relay that. Because I think our community policing part of this, outside of our good policies, our good training, our, our good leadership from city elected officials on down, I think it's our CEO, our community policing is really to be commended and, and looked at as part of the overall reason why I feel that we do things the right way.
Very good. Chris Hands?
Yeah. I, I just love this discussion. I have written all these questions and my colleagues have asked all of the questions that I had. So they are brilliant people, aren't they? And then the other piece is, I was going to finish up by saying the timing of this and talking about how involved our department is in the community is just supreme. So thank you so much for doing it without me at least knocking on the door and saying, it's time, it's time. Thank you.
Mr. DeBoe?
Just real quick, sir. Chief, first of all, thank you for your service and you get the opportunity to thank all the officers too. They do a great job. How often is, or is the co-responder sent out with the officers in our community? How often does that happen?
I don't have those numbers directly here in front of me, so I would just be educating and guess. But our co-responder does two very important things. Now, the first one is the obvious that you just said, go out with the officers when there's a person in crisis. Obviously, there's only one co-responder. We split her with other agencies and she's not here 24/7. So our officers still have to be trained. That's why we have CIT certified officers, crisis intervention officers and such. The most important thing that our co-responder though does is behind the scenes and it's the follow-up visit with our people that live in our city that have mental health issues. Because if we can prevent the repeat, you know, crises that these people get into and have to continue some police officers there to get the crisis calmed down. And that's what we do. Our job is not to provide mental health services. Our job is to get the crisis to a stabilization point so that they can get help. So our co-responder follows up after the fact and make sure that they're going to their meetings or going to their clinic visits or on their medication. That's where the co-responder really is worth more than just helping us go at the scene. We have other options available to us. They're not as good as having the co-responder there, but we do have options to get the crisis calmed down. Where we were lacking was that follow-up after, so that we weren't there today, tomorrow, the day after, and we were doing the same thing over and over and over again. Co-responder really helps in that regard and that's where we really appreciate it.
You know, and that's, that's kind of my thought. I, I see a national push for all this defunding the police. And why don't we fund, okay, and something maybe as a council, we consider helping our police force with that co-responder? Again.
You have.
A mental, a mental situation can turn violent very quickly as well. And I think that's something that.
Sorry, I don't mean to cut you off.
No, go right ahead.
Credit for what we have here. It's not without the support of the council when you fund the number of officers you have on the streets. when you fund the number of officers you have on the streets, you fund our training programs, you fund our co-responder, the citizens of Marion, we're paying for this. It, it's not, this isn't something that we do in isolation over here. This is not my big plans or the chief's before big plans that we just somehow make magically occur. This is all done, like Chris likes to say, Engel, this is a team effort. I mean, if we didn't have the support of the citizens, the support of council, the support of, of the city administrator to do these things, that, then we wouldn't be doing it. I mean, because we just can't produce stuff. So, you guys are as much responsible for all these good things that we're talking about as, as anything because you have the support, you support your officers, their, and what they're doing in the community. So, you know. Take credit for it. You've earned it.
No credit, no. You get all the credit. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Carl Dahl, I think you had your hand up next.
Yeah, I, first of all, thank you very much for this conversation, both the chief and the mayor for leading us through this. It's been very educational. I always find our conversations around policing to be a very sobering part of being on city council. I wasn't really expecting that when I got onto council. But I would like at some point, if we could have a similar conversation around the whole concept of probable cause and why do you stop people and start these interactions with people? And, and, and round also, how do we keep racial bias out of probable cause? So, you know, that's another discussion for another time.
Those are great conversations and I love talking probable cause. Mayor, about my passions relates to the Constitution and probable cause because I used it to, to my benefit when I was out there running around doing actual police work instead of what we want to do now. Those are great conversations and, and that, and, and we actually do cover those topics in our citizens academy. But I, absolutely, those, those are conversations we can have, whether it's a forum like this. You come to my office, you want to sit down and I, I can, I can give you a presentation on the probable cause and reasonable suspicion and, and, and you'll have to shut me up because eight hours later going, hey, I got things to do because I'm passionate about that.
Well, maybe my apologies to the rest of the council then.
That's very good. Whitney, would you, do you have a question or comment?
Well, I think it's a good way to kind of naturally wrap it up, but I, I, speaking of defund the police or funding other areas, I would love to be able to continue this conversation on, you know, a semi-regular basis at the council level. I think it's really productive for us and, and it, it gives us great context on how to talk about these things in our community. And especially when you say you help us fund the, you know, the crisis workers and you help us do that. If there are things that we should be more aware of at the council level when it comes to our financial goals and, and providing those kinds of resources for you, those are really important for us to know. And, and I'm not as educated as I should be on, on those kinds of things and, and what you would need to be able to expand those resources and, and, and really use them in a way that is valuable to the, the community even more. So, I'll, I'll probably follow up via email, but, you know, I, I think it would be good to come back and talk about that specific topic in a future date.
Very good. I don't agree talking, so.
Cool. Well, I'll be looking for that PowerPoint on probable cause.
I'm going to finish this up. We've had certainly a significant time to talk about this and there's more to talk about. I'm sure if you have interest in, in time later in the future to do that. I'll just conclude by saying that we are very, very fortunate to live in not only the city of Marion, but Johnston County. We have, we are surrounded by and large by professionals. Our district attorney's office does a wonderful job. We work as a team. I, I get the, the luxury as the, as the police academy director to host the, the meeting of the Chiefs Association. We do it monthly and all the chiefs get together. And we have had very lengthy discussions about all the things that we're talking about right here as a, as a body of different police chiefs, along with the highway patrol, the, the marshal service, the DA's office. We do this monthly. We have cooperation in this county that's unheard of in other jurisdictions. Again, it's mainly because we're all on the same team. We're trying to do, we're trying to do the best thing that we can, provide the best services we can for our citizens in, in the most fair and impartial way that we can, we can possibly do that. We have a low, we're, we're lucky. We have a low crime rate. We have a decent amount of resources. We have the luxury of being able to do things that many communities would dream of doing. And, and Marion's just a simple part of that. We're just the same. We, we're just interested in doing the right thing. Do we make mistakes from time to time? Of course we do, but we learn from that. And we, we're not perfect, but we, we are far better off than many of our sister cities and other jurisdictions. The problem I see is that typically we have a situation occur in Seattle or Minneapolis or Chicago or LA or whatever, and people tend to paint the brush broadly at all, all jurisdictions. But really, we have little in common with some of these areas in terms of our problems and our challenges. So, I appreciate the council's consideration or concerns and hope that you come away from this feeling a little better about, about the places where you live. So, let's move on. The next issue is the monthly finance report. And I think that was included in your packet. I don't think we're necessarily going to make a report on it unless Mr. Engel wishes to do so or unless there are.
Just, just a quick overview, just yet is in the package. Just wanted to let everybody know that, that this finance report reflects sales tax through March. So, March, even though we were shut down half of the month due to the pandemic, year-to-date through March, we were about one point seven percent over twenty nineteen. So, we were off to a really, really good start this year until the pandemic. So, we're, we're going to need, we're going to need every penny of that once we figure out what April and May look like. So, we'll, we'll, we'll share that information when we have it, which we should have it the next week or so.
Very good. Any questions on that? Okay. All right, let's move out of this and go into community development, public works and CIP and look at our community development update. Brian Dyer, would you like to chime in here at this point?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council, mayor. Brian Dyer, Community Development Director. Just real briefly, the first thing I have to talk to you about tonight is that on Wednesday of this week, on the twenty-fourth, we'll be having a virtual comprehensive plan workshop. So, it'll be online. Obviously, due to the pandemic, we're having to rearrange and juggle the way we reach out to the public. So, this will be one of the first opportunities for the public to do an online meeting. So, we're really excited about that. That's going to be at six o'clock, again, on Wednesday. And folks who are interested in it, they just need to go to mariamtwentyforty.org. That's mariamtwozerofourzero.org and they can access the virtual meeting via the website. So, again, anybody and everybody who's interested, please join us on Wednesday. A little bit on construction side of things, Reed Dodge Chrysler Jeep Ram facility. It's going along fine, going along well. The progress continues with that. As so does the construction with Schweitzer Senior Builders. That is proceeding on a pretty good, well, nicely as well. Then the last thing I have is just to let you know that we continue to work with DS Bus Lines and their engineering firm on their improvements that they would like to make at Fifty-Fifth and Marion Drive. That's the intersection they'd like to use as an entryway into their facilities. We continue to work with them to the building process on that. And we've got some initial plans from them. Again, there's some comments back and feedback, feedback back to them. And again, we're still working forward that. I'll be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
All right. Mr. Neal, I see your hand up first.
Yeah, I was wondering, is the meeting on Wednesday going to also be available on YouTube like these other meetings? I, I won't be able to be there Wednesday night and I would like to be able to look at it, so.
Okay. I, I believe it is, but I will verify that with the consultants.
Thanks.
Anybody else have a question? Mr. Dyer?
See, thanks. So, that's all I have this evening. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council.
Thank you. Very good. Mr. Engel, do we have any staff items this evening?
Only staff item I have is just to reiterate an email that I sent earlier. We've got a virtual CIP tour that's been released on YouTube. If you haven't had the opportunity to review that, it's pretty cool. I want to give a shout out to the communications team of Jenna and Lauren and Officer Myers in the police department who did the drone footage. So, it's just a substitute for the CIP tour, the bus tour that we would have taken in the spring. It talks about some current projects in the twenty twenty budget that we're working on as well as some that will be proposed as part of twenty twenty-one. So, we'll be putting a news item out so the public can share in that video and learn a little bit about some of those projects, but just wanted to point that out. And if anybody didn't get a chance to see it, I'm pretty proud of it. I think, I think you'll enjoy it if you haven't seen it yet. It's about ten minutes long, so it's not quick, but it's better than a three-hour bus ride.
Did you send out a link on that?
I did, yes.
Okay. I apparently overlooked that, so I'll have to go back, look at my emails. Thank you very much on staff items. Mr. Neal, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, when did you send that link out since I, I've had some email issues? I would like to look at it. So, is it possible to send it out again or?
I can. I, yep, I sent it out at two forty this afternoon. I will send it out again.
Thank you.
All right. Very good. Mr. Page?
I always push the wrong button. Sorry about that. Yeah, I was just going to ask that Mr. Engel, whether he knew, knows anything or has the updates on the I-35 project. I know it's not our project, but maybe they, they communicate with us as far as the Seventy-Fifth Street entrance exits and the widening of the lanes. I mean, I drive by there and I just didn't know if we were still on target of, you know, just many changes with COVID, of, of deadlines, of when they think that's going to be finished. That's a long ways away, but I don't know if you have any updates?
I don't. I can get you an update. I don't monitor that, other than I know it's still being worked on, but I will, I can get you an update and get that out to you.
Okay, thank you. I, I just was wondering if they were still on, on target to when they thought they were going to be done.
Very good. Any other comments or questions before we move into new business and adjournment? Okay, there is no new business as far as I can tell. And so, I'll, if someone objects, I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Page?
I'll make a motion, Mary, that we adjourn.
And our city clerk, can follow that up?
I'd like to second it.
Share second.
All in favor?
See you in a couple of weeks.
So long.
Bye.
Take care.